Good afternoon. It is 2:02 on Thursday, August eighth, and we are ready to start the briefing meeting. First item on the agenda is Policy 2.06, Family Involvement, and we will hear from Dr. Spiro, Ms. LaFountain, and Mr., I don't know how to say his name.
Oscar.
How do I say his name? Olguen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Mr. Olguen?
Good afternoon. I'm going to let Oscar Olguen, who's our Assistant Director for Title I in Migrant Education. I'm going to let him talk you a little bit about the overview of the policy, and then he's here at table and answer any questions they have. Oscar?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're here to make sure that our policy is aligned to our Elementary and Secondary Education Act, better known as ESSA. The changes that were made are the ones that remove the current section numbers that were part of No Child Left Behind and have been changed. So as strike lines or strike through, numbers get moved as we have in our own board policy. So we wanted to make sure those were intact, and also the main title of parent involvement has changed to Parent and Family Engagement, to include all sectors of who is raising our current students today.
Board members, any questions or comments?
No.
No, thank you. I actually had a comment or a question that applies to this, and I think the next policy we're going to be looking at, and the next policy includes parents/guardians, but this one does not. And I was wondering why we were, why aren't we inclusive of guardian at every reference in this policy and in the next policy?
That's something that we could definitely change. The 2.061, is it when you refer to the Title I? The Title I? Or is this the?
Let me get back there. Yeah, 2.061 says parent/guardian in some places, and in some places it doesn't say parent/guardian. This one, 2.06, only says parent, so can we have parent/guardian throughout?
We can align the language for both of those policies. It only makes sense to do that.
That'd be great. That was my only question, I think. Wait until I look.
I do like the word engagement, though. It says a whole lot.
I don't know where my notes went.
Should be low yellow if you didn't say it.
I would agree.
Oh, so my other question was, where did these suggested changes originate? But you already said ESSA. So, we're good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
2.061 was basically the same thing. Homeless students, 4.28.
Amy Clark.
Yes, good afternoon. We had a number of changes that we made to the homeless policy to address the changes made in the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. The major provisions that we needed to make some changes to in our policy required topics around school stability, expanded immediate enrollment, and disputes. With regard to school stability, there is now presumption that it is in the student's best interest to remain within their school of origin. We have to, are required to consider student-centered factors related to that best interest, and give priority to the request of the parent, the guardian, or an unaccompanied youth that fits that criteria. Around expanded immediate enrollment, schools are specifically required to provide immediate enrollment even if the student has missed application or enrollment deadlines. That has been included. The districts must develop, review, and revise policies to remove any barriers to the identification, enrollment, and retention of homeless children and youth, including any barriers due to outstanding fees or fines or absences. And around disputes, unaccompanied youth have a right to receive a written notice, as well as the parent or guardian. And written explanations are required with the decisions that are made by the school district. So those are the changes that were included within the policy.
Ms. Gibbs.
On page nine of 10, where you have struck, the superintendent designates Assistant Director of Attendant Social Work Center as a liaison. What do we, is there a liaison, another liaison, or how does that work?
Yes, we actually, it was one of our notable practices, have a full-time homeless liaison within the school district. This strike might have been around the way that the wording was, that position is funded out of our Title I-A set aside.
And there's just one for the district?
Yes, we have one full-time liaison, and actually she is here. Sheena Torres Nunez.
Thank you.
She is a licensed clinical social worker and has been our homeless liaison for three years, four years now. Fourth year, yes.
And how does she coordinate with the schools and with the social workers at the schools? Is that?
Yes, actually, she provides services starting at enrollment. She works with the enrollment department. She also works and provides training with our information specialists, our staff, our school social workers, teachers, principals. She's done some training with our principals as well to educate them on the McKinney-Vento Act. And then our social workers within each of our schools are an extension of that and provide support to our homeless students as well.
And lastly, what's our percentage of homeless students now?
I know that we have 1,280 homeless students currently. So that percentage, you hear the percentage?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. So just for clef, this past school year, yes, good afternoon, everyone. This past school year, the district identified 1,275 students as being in transition homeless. Already currently for this school year, we've identified about 125.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Is there a certain area that they're more populated?
Yes. The historical data for the district does show that the majority of our homeless students do reside in the East Zone.
Thank you.
Yes.
But homeless could be not necessarily homeless, but living with someone else.
Yes. So the McKinney-Vento definition of homelessness is students who are doubled up, living in hotels, living in their cars, transitional shelters such as ACT and Salvation Army.
Ms. Fisher, did you know?
I just want to say thank you for what you do, and I know that we have a lot of children maybe in our schools who are not really identified as homeless and are. So we really appreciate all the efforts that you put forth, as well as the rest of the social work department.
Well, thank you so much for your feedback. That is an ongoing goal of the homeless education program, is the identification. And so we do work very closely with all of our district stakeholders to ensure that our homeless students are identified.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Policy 6.01, Attorney Beerman?
Yes. Just pull up my notes. Basically, the Policy 601 is your travel expense policy, and recent legislative change required that outside the district travel where the cost will exceed $500 has to come back to the board for approval in advance, that you have to itemize all of the estimated cost of the travel, and that it has to be subject to public comment, which all of your school board business is. So we've amended the policy to reflect those changes in stable, to add a requirement.
There was no limit previously?
Previously, it didn't require, yeah, yeah, previously, it didn't have those requirements. And you could have a policy, for example, your own policy that would say, that it could be administratively approved, or each member had a certain amount of money to spend on travel and didn't have to come back to the board for approval, but now it does.
One more question? Ms. Gibbs.
Someone mentioned that there is a, I don't know if it's a statute or whatever, that if mileage is a part of what we do, that we have to, you know, claim mileage or something? There's some?
I believe we, I believe mileage is covered. I thought there was something in here for in-county travel, if you look at the next page of that policy there. I don't know if the page is loaded, but there is a mileage policy within your, within your policy that is, to my knowledge, compliant.
Thank you.
Ms. Jevonelli?
Something was mentioned when we were briefed on this a while back about determining if it was mileage, in-county mile, from the home, or no, just mileage in general, from the home or from the district.
It's on page two.
Oh, I didn't get to page two.
At the very top of 6.01.
Thank you.
My question is, are we planning as a board to talk about our travel budget in November? Ms. Reader, was that the plan? Because I know we've had individual board member meetings with staff on this subject, but when were we as a board going to discuss? Like, for example, charging for mileage to drive from my home to the district? I don't, I don't, I don't do that. I would, I don't do that, but I understand some board members do that. And so we, as a board, should be coming to some kind of consensus as to what is a permissible travel expense and what is not a permissible travel expense. So when are we having that conversation as a group?
My understanding is you're going to have a workshop on that. I don't know when it was going to be scheduled to ask those particular questions and reach a consensus, yes.
Okay.
I think the home base is the school, just like you going to work. So this would be us going to work, and anything that we go from here is your travel.
It's, it's the diff, but you, if you suppose that you were going to, you were driving to a conference in Sarasota, and your home is
Closer.
Is eight miles from here.
Right.
So if you were going from your home instead of here, you would take that eight miles out of the, of the estimate.
Well, thank you. That's what I thought too.
Right. You calculate it from your place of work, so you just, if you, if your actual travel were from home, you would just minus out the home to work.
Any other questions or comments?
When we had that briefing a few months ago, I believe that it was brought to our attention that several years ago, when there was a budget crunch, that the board just came to a consensus not to charge for in-county travel. And that's something I would like to see revisited, because, you know, there are a lot of things that we go to, and it seems to me that we should not, as board members that are being paid for the job that we do, we're not volunteers, you know, we get a free admission or a ticket or something like that, to also charge the district for mileage. That just seems to me an unnecessary expense when we have so many expenses and we're trying to tighten the belt, and also when we have, we are making more as board members than a beginning teacher. So I know I've never done that, and it really surprised me when I first heard that it was an expense that we could bill.
And I think that that's part of that workshop discussion that we would have, which I assume will be, is on the list of things to be scheduled.
Do we know?
Yes. Any other questions, comments?
Okay, great, thank you. Audit status update. Dr. Desmore, Ms. Malley.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins.
Good afternoon.
Happy to be here today to present to you our audit update. Dr. Desmore, you want to start?
You're matching.
I know we coordinated for today, right? It was a total surprise when we got here, but we thought it was a really good idea after we saw it. Sorry, I'm having a little technical issue here. I'm pulling up.
I'll get it started. So there are three different audits that we're going to be briefing you on, the status of, the fiscal year 17 operational audit, which was conducted a little while ago, and the findings continue to roll in. So do you want to start with that one?
Absolutely. So as Susan said, three different audits that we're going to talk about today. The first one being the follow-up from the FY17 audit, in which we were still pursuing communications with the Department of Education and the Auditor General to resolve the outstanding findings. So we did, since our last time here together, received communication from the Department of Education, supporting the district's corrective action in response for finding number eight, which was related to documentation on volunteer background checks. So that makes a total of five findings, in which the confirmation of appropriate district action had been received from DOE. We still have, if we recall, outstanding responses that we're waiting from the DOE on, on findings number one and number two. We did receive some correspondence from the DOE last week, asking for some clarifying information related to finding number one, which was impact fees. We did send them that clarifying information, I believe either late yesterday or early today, so hopefully we can anticipate hearing something from them very soon about at least that one. But that's the only other correspondence that we've had with them related to that audit since the last time we were together. So are there any questions on that? And if not, we'll move on to the next audit.
And the update is in our ongoing?
On the Google sheet? You will see that that correspondence from DOE resolving finding number eight, yes, that is updated on the Google sheet with the audit findings, yes.
If you hear anything out there regarding the LEAK clock, that's a major district initiative to address one of our audit findings, so relative to timekeeping. So that's a change where we have taken the auditor's recommendation and have worked to change our business practice and have worked to train our administrators, and also, you know, we've sent reminders out to make sure that we're changing people's behavior as well.
Reminder on reminder.
Yeah.
So that starts with this school year? I mean, with?
And one of the things that maybe you should be aware of, I know we're seeking, trying to seek some clarification, because you've got, you've got this whole issue of exempt versus non-exempt employees, and I think with the audit finding, they're really wanting the time to include some of our exempt employees, which would be teaching staff, where as in our past practice has been, they sign into a work site, but now they're, you know, we're having them utilize the LEAK clock to indicate they are present and then indicate that they are leaving for the day. So if we get a different ruling from the Department of Education, then we'll update our practice and procedure.
Ms. Jevonelli?
I think you answered it, so it's implemented this school year?
Yes.
It's not a, they're not still working on that? It's a done deal, and they're, okay. They're using it. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Other questions, comments before we move on?
Just one quick one.
Ms. Jordan, please.
So if we have the exempt and non-exempt, those that are non-exempt, if they go over, what is it, 40 hours, then we have the overtime?
Yes.
That we need to make sure that we have that budget for that.
Just one clarification. The LEAK clock is used for attendance tracking. We do not pay by the LEAK clock, so we have a separate procedure for overtime pay and separate practices for that. So the LEAK clock is not being used to calculate time worked and pay. It's for validation of attendance.
Right, but it's also documentation of what time, how many hours they're there. So it would be their backup for their hours, correct?
And, well, we, and when we get to the point where we know that each person is using consistently, right, not forgetting and all of that, yes. But generally, the answer to your question is yes. For non-exempt staff, if they work more than the allotted 40 hours in the week, then they are entitled to a compensation, either comp time or overtime related to that. And every administrator is responsible for monitoring that, an approval of that overtime, that either you are monitoring staff hours, and either they're not working overtime, and they should be working and clocking in and out at their appropriate hours, or if the administrator has approved overtime, then their out clocked hours presumably would reflect that. And in, but, but in order to pay that overtime, they still are submitting an overtime form to pay out that overtime.
Okay, yeah, because I did hear that out in the district. So thank you.
Question?
I'm sorry. So then I just, I want to clarify. So it's, LEAK clock is only being used for in and out, not as a timekeeper? Is that really what you, okay.
Yes. That's right. That's right.
One thing, one question about the 40 hours. Teachers, 37 and a half, correct? So is theirs 37 and a half, and after that, it's overtime?
Well, teachers are on the exempt schedule, so teachers are not subject to overtime or administrators. Okay. All right, so then the next audit, that would be the FY19 operational audit that's being conducted by the State Auditor General's office. We have had, you all may recall, a team of six that had been on-site for a little while now. They're winding down their review and their questions, with three part-time people that are still here this week, and then just one part-time onsite auditor next week. So we anticipate that after the end of next week, they will no longer be on-site, although we do expect that they'll still have additional questions, and we'll still have some correspondence back and forth through August and potentially into September. But at the end of August, we'll have a better understanding of when the state auditors anticipate they will have some type of report based on the operational audit that they would have just completed for FY19. And then the last one then would be the FY19 financial audit, the year we just completed the financial audit for that. It's being conducted this time by Moore, Stevens, and Lovelace, which is our, not the state auditor. We're closing our fiscal year 19 in the process of doing that now, and that will substantially conclude in early September, culminating with the, culminating with the submission of the annual financial report to the state on September 11. We anticipate the auditors being here, will be beginning some field work offsite beginning on September 2. They did conduct some preliminary work a few months back, like in April or May. They'll conduct some preliminary offsite work again, beginning September 2, and then they will come here and be on-site, anticipated September 9 through the 27th. And typically, after they do that, they'll conclude their work in November, because we have to have our audited, the opinion from the auditors in order to submit the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the big report that's submitted to different organizations for the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, and that is due in December. So we anticipate having that audited opinion from Moore, Stevens, Lovelace sometime in late November or December. So that is the update in terms of where we are with the current audits that we have going. Are there any additional questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think we're good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next we have District Legal Services. Attorney Williams and Dr. Pruitt.
He predicted this.
All right, and that's the right one, so, because there were two. And I just wanted to be, to give you the, the structure of the organizational chart, and I'm actually going to add some areas under areas of specialization, because there's just so many areas for school district attorneys to have to deal with. But those were kind of the key areas that I initially came up with. The areas that I would be adding to that would be public records, FERPA and HIPAA, which are kind of, you have to know that kind of stuff to be a school board attorney or municipal attorney for that matter. The other would be garnishments, which is what, one of the items that my office handles, and there's a significant portion of those that go out pretty much every week. The structure, as you see there, is a very, it's a general counsel model, so you have your chief legal counsel, and you can call it whatever you want. That was just something, actually called it chief legal counsel to be consistent with what we call our chiefs, essentially, since the position does report to the superintendent. Obviously, the executive assistant would, is a current position that's available. One that is not available, that is currently unfunded, would be a paralegal. And again, this is just a long-term plan in terms of the initial structure. Obviously, you see the Office of Civil Rights, which you would have a coordinator for equity and civil rights compliance, and then you have to your right there, staff attorneys, which right now, I believe, we've, were funded for two. So currently, all of those positions are funded for, with the exception of the paralegal position. And the reason I put that in there is, in any legal office, it's important to have someone in that role, because they can perform functions that an executive assistant cannot in terms of putting pleadings together and responding to certain things with an attorney's approval. Obviously, they have to have a specialized background in that, as well as a certified, be a certified paralegal. Ironically, my assistant happens to be one, but which is one of the reasons I hired her to be my executive assistant. But she has also been very helpful because of her background and knowledge of the various areas of how to prepare pleadings and prepare correspondence. Now, with respect to the Office of Civil Rights, the goal there, and again, this is a new position, would be to transition the EEO complaints, which typically go to our professional standards office with Mr. Brown, into this office and deal with those directly. One of the issues that I've been concerned about is the number of EEO, OCR, veterans complaints that we receive, which are the federal complaints, but we don't get as many through our process. Now, there's reasons behind that, I'm sure. However, I want our staff to feel that this is a process that they can utilize and maybe resolve those issues at the district level before they get to federal, because once they get to federal, we ultimately sometimes end up in either litigation or settlement for, which again, is an expense to the district. So to the extent that we could resolve those issues internally, that would be my idea with respect to that role. They would be investigating those. So instead of Mr. Brown's office investigating those complaints, you'd have a specific person with investigative experience, and again, we will get them trained as well. I mean, that's one thing that I think is important. It won't get out of hand, but I think it's important to have anybody get training in their area. Obviously, you can come in with a certain set of skill sets, but you still need to do continuous training, just to make sure you're up to speed. One of the recommendations I got from my colleague at Orange County was that he went through the EEO investigator training. What he garnered from that was, he got to see how those investigators get trained, what they're trained to look at, what they're trained to identify, and more importantly, how they put together their reports. What he did for his county is he took their reports and he mirrored it. So when he does an investig- So when he does an investigation within his district, he follows the exact line of thinking of an EEO investigator in terms of content, and so he's answering all their questions. One of the things, from what I deem, investigators are looking for specific things. And if you provide them with the information that answers their questions, you make their job easier to their superiors to show how the district did not discriminate against an individual employee. So that would be one of the functions there. The other issue under that particular office is, of course, Title IX. It's out there. We talk about it. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of new changes to that law as well as things that are very relevant to the school district. For example, donation of, a donation from a booster club to a school site. You know, that has to be equally distributed by both genders. So these are the type of issues that fall into that. Other things that would be under a civil rights, and again, this is not to take away from what they do in HR in terms of ADA, but you have ADA discrimination, Section 504, Individuals with Disability Educational Act, as well as the Veterans Affairs Complaints. The goal, again, based on the type of complaints we would receive, would be for this individual to put the facts together, talk to the school site, determine what happened, any information that's needed so that our office can provide the legal response to the complaint. Again, with, as I stated previously, incorporating more law into the, to the response. Again, sometimes the facts don't always suit us. And what I've been seeing is some of these cases are, you know, they're lingering for a while. And, you know, I've seen EEO cases that date back almost four to five years. And they're just now trying to finalize it. That puts us at a disadvantage because employees leave, supervisors change, policies change. I had a whole department no longer exist in one of my cases. So it makes it a little bit problematic in trying to respond. So we want to make sure that we have a very thorough process in terms of investigating those items. And again, I think the goal is to see, you know, what comes of that office. I can tell you right now, I got four complaints in the last week, so, that would fall into that category, which will obviously have to be investigated and responded to at the respective agencies. Again, a significant amount of time that would be, that I currently do. So that's, that's something that I currently do that would give me the assistance, at least from the investigative standpoint, so that I could, you know, focus on the legal response.
Can I interrupt you for a second, Ms. Vaughn?
So Office of Civil Rights and Equity, you're dealing with not just employees and staff, but student complaints for parents, students?
And that's correct. And one of the things that we're currently, this is a transitional and obviously a new department. So I'll be working with Mr. Brown and Mr. Bradley because currently, Mr. Bradley handles those issues. So it would be unfair to start someone and then just transition everything. So there will be a transitional process in terms of how those items are delegated over. One of the things I can tell you that that role will do, and it came up earlier, is training. I think that's something that a lot of these areas, we need training on Title IX. We need training on, and it's not to overburden our staff with training, but I can tell you, when I have to respond to OCR complaints, one of the main things that their department is looking at is what did we do after the incident occurred? What sort of policies do we have in place? What sort of training do we provide? Those are all typical questions that get asked. And usually, when they enter into those three or two agreements, which are ultimately settlement agreements, they typically require us to do that as a function of the resolution. I'd prefer to have that already on the books. So when they say, do you do this, we've done three trainings on that already this year, which addresses that maybe the incident was an isolated incident as opposed to a common theme within our district.
So where does like Mr. Edie's position fit in?
Follow.
Here. Where does it? And Dr. Atkins, I'm still waiting for the organizational chart, the big one. Is he, his position as it is now? In this somewhere or somewhere else?
No, his is a lot higher up. So.
Well, but I mean.
No, but and again, I think, you know, that's a fair question. And I think, you know, no department, I think, operates in a box. I think there's going to be collaboration amongst several different departments. And obviously, because of the nature of what he does, I think it's important that, you know, his department is involved, especially with respect to when students are involved. So even now, you know, him and I engage in conversations about things, trends I see in different areas, whether it be student discipline and things along those lines.
But he would be in the area of the training, for instance.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
But you would be like, okay, did we provide training? So I guess it's a horizontal connection.
Yeah, it is. It is. They both are, both are offices that are in our general area. But one of the things we were trying to do is to get a separation between, you know, the complaint investigation, which was really kind of bogging down Mr. Edie. Whereas his focus really should be on staff training, student engagement, that type of thing. So this allows us to be able to really free him up on his pure mission while being able, I think, to resolve these complaints in a much better, more efficient manner.
Yeah. And I couldn't have said that better myself. And I think the other thing was to get it out of professional standards because you obviously have, and, you know, in that office, them investigating complaints that could lead to employee discipline, which they would be investigating. So it kind of merges in a little bit.
Ms. Ginn.
Kind of piggybacking on Ms. Vaughn's question, anticipating that NAACP is under the impression that this Office of Civil Rights and Equity position in some way has a dotted line. Because when they were told we would staff that department. So it is a valid point to be able to say this position is here, but kind of a long dotted line. It does go back to Mr. Edie and that department.
And again, I think, you know, a lot of offices have, you know, cross functions. I do, however, think we did explain to them the function, because I think it was always stated to them, at least in the conversations I had, that it was going to report to me. I think there initially, when we were discussing the idea, it started there and then it slid over.
And we did. We said that. I'm just saying kind of devil's advocate to make sure that there is that, you know.
And I think that may be an issue that we'll probably need to follow up with that organization and just have conversations just to make sure they're aware. I don't think there would be a concern there. But no, I think it's fair to say that, you know, we want to just make sure everyone understands the reporting lines and how things work. But again, you know, I, I reach out to any department that is relevant to whatever I'm doing. So it just, you know, I'm kind of one of those like cross collaborators because some people have knowledge in areas that, you know, I may not, may have strength in other areas. So, but I completely understand where you're coming from as it relates to that area. And again, that area is a new area. It's obviously open to expansion depending on what the needs of the district are. But I think it addresses, you know, most importantly, the concepts of training, which again can be done in conjunction with Mr. Edie's office. The, the actual resources to look into these issues independent of HR. And then combining that with the legal office, which would be providing responses.
One last question. I know there's a certain legality to us, like seeing all the cases or whatever. But is there some way that we could even have a, an overview of the number of complaints, the number of EEO, the number of lawsuits that are on our books now?
Absolutely. And one of the things that, you know, is actually in my contract, which wasn't in there before, which is I'll, I'll mind, I will now provide you an annual report. So I will provide you a, and I can do that request, you know, quarterly if necessary. But my goal is for you not to not know what's happening in the Legal Services Department. Obviously, I communicate with our superintendent because that's who I report to. And I'd like to, I hope he would say that I'm, I keep him informed as to what's going on. But, you know, again, I think there's certain information that needs to be shared, you know, district-wide at your level as well. And obviously, I can collaborate with the school board attorney to provide any information that is pertinent. But yeah, I think it's important for you to know how many DARECs we're having, how many pre-determination hearings. That kind of information, I think, is important for you to have.
And then looking at it in the big picture as to the data, that tells a story. If we have a lot of this particular thing in this particular area, then that goes back to something the superintendent can look at, okay, why? You know, what do we need to do to fix this?
And again, I agree with you. I think we've started to see some trends. You know, I'm new to the district, so I get to kind of come in with an open set of eyes and see things or hear things that, you know, based on what's going on in the legal community, based on what's being filed against the district. And I can tell you that there, what I heard, and I guess was news to a lot of people, was that, you know, the district always pays. That's something that I heard when I got here. And if that's the opinion of the rest of the world, then you're going to get a lot of lawsuits. You're going to get a lot of complaints because everyone knows, if I file a lawsuit against the district, I'm going to get thirty-five thousand dollars at least, you know. And so we have to, as a legal department, including both the school board attorney, turn that around and change that line of thinking and do things that are provided in statute and contract that allow us to recover fees when applicable or put ourselves in a best position to resolve cases. But that, and that's a very difficult thing to manage with limited legal resources. That is the challenge. I could tell you, when you have tort cases, it's very easy to run up the number with an outside attorney on those types of cases, and that is a strategy of the plaintiff's attorney. Let me run up the fee. So when they go to the school board and say, we've spent a hundred thousand dollars on this, the school board wants to settle it because they've run up the bill. Well, if you, you have some of that handled in-house, then you don't have a hundred thousand dollars worth of fees. And that's what we did on, you know, and that was kind of the model in Miami, and that's why we brought a lot of that in-house. Now, obviously, that can't happen immediately here. But there are ways, and I'll get into it as I talk about the staff attorney roles, that I think that we can target specific areas of law where we're spending more money than not on outside legal services. Again, I think there's always going to be, as Mr. Bierman said, collaboration. There has to be. There's just, we're a billion-dollar organization. However, I think there are areas, if specifically targeted, you can see a significant reduction in a short amount of time. And those would be areas like tort, employment, labor and employment, where we have DOA hearings, PERC hearings, et cetera. So, and I'll give you an example. I have an upcoming DOA hearing that's going, we just scheduled it for three days. So that's three days' worth of, you know, time presenting witnesses, preparing, you know, witnesses, which would be prior. I mean, that's probably on average, would, you know, Mr. Bierman could probably agree with this. It's going to cost the district in terms, if we did it hourly, a substantial amount of money, you know, upwards of fifteen thousand or more. So.
Do you, is there, and I really don't know about this. Is there a budget line that you use when you have to do that? When you get to a certain point with a case and, you know, we have to go outside to do this? Is there a budget line item that covers the costs that you have to do? How is that?
I've actually tried to be as, I've tried to keep that at a minimum as much as possible. Again, it's a function of just time and resources and the amount of work that's coming in. And I, and I'll be honest, I thought it was going to get easier over the summer because I didn't have to deal with the custody questions and some of the things that happen during the academic year. Because again, it's gonna, there's going to be more work than I've had this summer. But there was no break this summer. We had a lot of different things, a lot of, whether it's an audit, it's an OIG complaint. We're just getting a substantial number of things that, and again, it goes back to your point about looking at trends and seeing how we make, maybe can reduce that. Public records, another example. I mean, we get a substantial amount of public records requests that ultimately end to OIG complaints and which other larger districts don't get. I mean, they get their share, but they don't, the volume, I think we're probably leading the, one of the leaders in the state in terms of the sheer volume that we get. And again, some of those public records requests require legal review to determine if an exemption applies in conjunction with the communications office. So I could list a ton of different things that we get that are in volume. But again, I think this structure is meant to address some of those on an immediate need, but also on a long-term plan. As it relates to the staff attorney's office, again, two of those positions are funded. The goal for me would be to identify a more experienced attorney that has a litigation background as well as a younger attorney that, you know, and again, sometimes you target roles based on years of experience. I think we're at a, in the creation of this, a unique opportunity where we can identify young attorneys that have certain strengths and put them in an area of law where we can, we can watch them grow. But at the, the immediate need would be that experienced attorney that could jump in here and kind of take some of the load of what I can handle. And that would be the first hire that we would try to take to the board, would be that more experienced attorney that could potentially cover several areas of law on the left-hand side. The way I've got it phased is to hire that attorney immediate, you know, as soon as possible, and then wait till after January to maybe bring on that other attorney so that we can assess where we're at and then determine what that next more immediate need is. I think bringing on two people at once will kind of create a little bit of a issue and try to determine who gets what. And again, I think we need to add and evaluate, then add and evaluate so that it's a more systematic process and we can make sure that we get the right person for the need that is currently present. One of the things I obviously have to do is determine what my role would be in addition to their role. And looking at those lists, I mean, there's a lot of different areas. Obviously, I have experience in a lot of the different areas. One of the things I, I believe I have to maintain is being our representative on collective bargaining. So both with Spalk and Talc. So that would be a function that would remain with me. I think one of our next needs, primarily we're an educational institution, would be, I'd be committed to academics. So I would serve as the attorney for the academic department and handle issues related to that. And that could be a broad spectrum of things. The garnishments, I'll think I'll keep that with me. I don't, I think that could be managed with both me and my assistant. And then contracts. I would, I would add that to my list of things that I, and those are just dedicated areas. It's not to say that I'm not going to cover anything else. I'll be very honest with you. I like to litigate, if you can't tell. And so I would, if I didn't get the chance to do a hearing or go to court every once in a while, it wouldn't sit well with me. So I think at some point, I'm going to be involved, whether it be on the labor and employment side or maybe even on the tort side. I'd love to, not that I want to try a case on the tort side, but if I had to, I would certainly be willing to do that depending on what resources we have available. So again, the next thing for me to do would be to identify those areas of law that would be, again, most important for our staff attorneys to be versed in. Given that we just passed a half-cent sales tax, I think it goes without saying that we need to have some level of construction operation experience. And that could also transition over to transportation. I think those are two key areas under operations that are pretty significant, pretty substantial. Normally, I would throw real estate in there, but that's kind of a, it's its own area. And right now, I believe we have sufficient resources with Henderson Franklin, who's our outside counsel in that area, to meet the needs of the district. I think we've got some pretty experienced attorneys. I know we have one that's outgoing, but there's someone that he's been working with that I feel comfortable with at that firm in terms of immediate real estate needs. And then obviously, we have our school board attorney, who also has experienced attorneys in that area. And I think there, I'm comfortable with ESC. I mean, I, you know, that's a broad area that requires, in my opinion, substantial. There, we have a good ESC department. So I know that hoping anyone's here from that department, but I will say that we've got some very good people in there that know what they're doing. They attend trainings, and I've gone with them on some of them. And they're knowledge seekers, meaning they want to be up to speed on what's going on, and I think they are. That being said, there, what I've seen is an increase in advocates that, you know, would require having an attorney present. And then last but not least, I think employment law. I mean, I think that's just such an over-encompassing area. Again, we have constant issues on the employment side that would need legal assistance. So for me, that would be the model. Again, everything's subject to change based on need. But I think, you know, by adding that, we will be providing significant support to the district that will, in my opinion, save the district money and also build institutional knowledge, create a succession plan because having more attorneys leaves someone in case someone leaves. Not to say that's going to happen. But, and again, leaves the district in a better position.
Speaking of dollars, what kind of price tag is on the York chart? And is it funded in our current budget that we're bringing forward?
As I stated, the two, the coordinator position is funded. I'll address that a little bit. That position is funded. I think it was originally brought to the district as a schedule. And I think the goal is to have an administrator position for that because we want to get, you know, someone that can, want to attract someone to that position that really is going to give, add strength and value there. So the two staff attorney positions have been funded. Everything else has been funded with the exception of that paralegal position. And that's not a immediate need. I just put it on there because I think as you grow, that is going to be a function that you're going to want in any sort of legal office.
And your deadline?
My deadline for the current immediate need is going to be to fill that coordinator position. Again, there's a lot of interests that has been received both internally and externally for that position. And then the second most immediate need is that second staff attorney. And I think there's interest in that position as well. And I think there's interest in that position as well out in the legal field. Again, you know, educational attorneys aren't just sitting around. But I think they're, I think we present a good situation for someone that wants to come in and get a lot of experience and grow with a district that is growing, so.
What about the second org chart?
Second org chart involves potentially legal services covering public records.
And you're not recommending that?
I, not recommending that. I think it's just still in discussion in terms of what makes the best sense for the district. I think because a lot of issues related to that function go to, ultimately end up in legal, that model may at some point make sense for the district.
But not today?
Again, I think it's more of a logistics thing. I don't think that with those other areas expanding, it makes sense to do it like immediately, but more of a, you know, a gradual transition.
Understood. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will show my bias in saying that we have saved the best for last in talking about Focus.
As a parent, can you say?
Yes, Mr. Davis and Mr. Eldon, who is my personal rock star.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Bierman. Pleasure to be here today to talk to you about the Focus SIS migration. I am joined by our illustrious project manager, Darrell Eldon, by day or night, and coordinator, infrastructure management, also by day or night. So, with that superhero reference, I'm sure that most everyone, including himself, has a cape somewhere stored away. The entire Focus project team is amazing, what they've accomplished since March. If you remember back when the board actually approved the expenditure, formally approved the expenditure for the Focus migration. I would like to dissect the title a little bit here, make sure that everyone is understanding. SIS is Student Information System. Focus software, the Focus part, as we've been in agreement with them since 2015, when we started the gradebook and scheduling modules of SIS. Now, of course, we're moving towards the remainder of those modules. There was a couple of years where they had a hiatus, you know, or we had a hiatus relative to our process of migrating. That works. A little bit about the strategic imperative and rationale about the migration to a complete Focus SIS system. I won't certainly read each one of these, but I will tell you that we spend around three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars a year just on, you know, maintenance licensing specifically for the operating system that it runs on. This is a decades-old mainframe system, certainly served the district well. If you think about it over the decades, we have had the majority of all of our, you know, SIS team retire. So, there's a risk, obviously, for the district not having the resources to maintain something as crucial, as strategic, as our SIS system. We also have lack of experienced functional users in other areas or departments in the district, and that's also a negative. So, we identified, we forecasted the need to make that shift, to move the remainder of our SIS features or modules over to Focus totally. That is, it's a complex, multi-year project, many stakeholders. It traverses the entire organization inside and out. What I can say, and I want to get back really quickly, I'm going to let Darrell dissect the team a little bit, but what I do want to say is that this is a fantastic example of a composite team. So, the team is made up of functional experts driving organizational value across the entire district. And so, I can assure you that, you know, the best is in line for the district here on that. So, what I would like, before I pass over to Mr. Eldon, is to direct your attention to the bottom. A URL, focusproject.leschools.net is a fantastic resource that you can access. That includes a lot of information. It also showcases the kind of communication, collaboration that we've had with many of these stakeholders, you know, principals included, so this is crucial. So, for more information, feel free to check that out. And I can honestly tell you that this, we've had the privilege of working with, you know, communications, with academic services, ISD personnel, literally, as we mentioned, across the board. This is a very complex, multi-year project. We're very proud of the team. So, with that, I will bring up Darrell and have him continue the rest here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, board. So, can we go to the next slide? All right, so, as Mr. Davis mentioned, we are a, you know, cross-departmental, cross-district team. So, we've got a functional manager and Susan Joyner, myself for the project, and then Cindy Sakina and her team, Dr. Sakina and her team are the developmental side of this. And we're going to work hand-in-hand and have worked hand-in-hand with the business process owners to get this done. Some prime examples of that, Dr. Spiro has been a huge advocate for this. Chuck Bradley, yeoman's work on this project. He's helped us develop the forms from the existing paper state, make sure our i's are dotted, our t's are crossed, to move those over to an electronic format. Evelyn Regra and her team have worked countless hours on getting our translations done for Haitian Creole. Our media team, Lauren Stillwell and her group, have worked fantastic with us on getting the messaging out, both on social media, on the translations, recording the videos for translations. For example, part of the support for this is we have one sheets that are in Spanish and in English so that we can provide those. We've provided those to the principals so they can have those hard copies for the parents. So, our tech team has set up portals, you know, so kiosk so that these folks can get their work done and get these folks registered that don't have an account, and then do their forms as well. We have free parent videos on how to do this, how to navigate. Those are all in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole. And we have a series of training videos as well that we've just wrapped up, and we're going to put those out for staff on different functionality. For example, administrators, how they would use the apps, teachers, how they would use the app, that type of thing. So, our product went live. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So, here's the schedule, and if you look to the left, we are finishing up Phase One. And the five deliverables we have are shown there. The, probably the most crucial has been the start of school forms. And what we've done is we've taken the district directory information forms for PK five and for the six through twelve to include the computer device on the secondary form, the computer device form, we've wrapped that in there. We've taken the student agreement that they've read and understand the code of conduct. That form is available for the secondary students, that's in there. We've taken the emergency forms to include the contacts and any issues, the medical issues that the child may have that needs to be documented. We've put that on there. We've held training sessions on how to, how parents, the videos are for the parents, obviously, and we've got some documentation for that. We've put the messaging out there. We've actually held training sessions where we've trained over the course of two days and four sessions. We've trained over three-hundred-and-twenty-five of our staff, administrators, information specialists, and so forth. We've done that here locally. Chuck has had training sessions separately and apart for the nursing staff and for their portion of this. So, we've made great efforts to get that in place. We've put the forms live on Tuesday morning around nine-thirty, ten o'clock. And to date, as of ten o'clock this morning, we've had sixteen thousand five hundred forms, not only submitted, but actually processed and approved, meaning there's more that are submitted and in the approval chain. So, we're underway. We're taking lessons learned from this phase of the project, and we're going to move. As you can well understand, this project touches literally every department and every school in this district. There are tendrils that are across all boundaries. So, the work of Dr. Spiro and his team, of Lauren and her team, all of the chiefs and their subordinates and our staff, the input from the principals, the input from the information specialists is absolutely crucial to the success of this project, and it's been very, very good so far. Part of the project is we have, we go through and we see processes that are in place, that have been in place for years, and this is the opportunity for us to decide, this is how we've done business, but is this the most effective way to do business? And see what the Focus project, what the Focus application offers and how we can match that up and align that with what we do and make it better. We're going to take lessons learned from where we're at, and we're going to make the process better and easier. We have some hurdles to overcome, but we'll get there, and so far, that's where we're at. So, in terms of Phase Two, like I said, we're wrapping up our go-live for Phase One. Phase Two, you can see, is the bulk of the work. Not all of our elements are listed there, like virtual school is one of the elements. We've got a list of our business process owners, and we're going to start scheduling those meetings, and we're going to start the cycle again for this phase. And as you see, we wrap up with our student enrollment process at the very end of this, and we're going to incorporate all of the changes to the student enrollment process as we go along and get that in there, so we'll transition it. And at that point, we will be fully focused. So, that's pretty much the update that I have for you. If you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to take them.
At the, oh, go ahead. No.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
At the open houses.
Ms. Morgan, who are you?
No, I'm standing, I can't sit.
Okay.
At the open houses, are they not, aren't they at least maneuvering some of the parents through some of that?
So, what we've done, our ISD department, we've got Chromebooks at all of our schools. We have labs set up and so forth. So, what we have done is we've taken the functionality of the Chromebooks, and we've made applications for these. So, one of them is basically, it allows a Chromebook to go into a kiosk mode. So, one of them, we've got set up for the forms, and one of them, we have set up for the parent portal account. So, what it is, is you go cycle through a station at your school, and if the parent does not have the account, they can go ahead and create that. If they do have the account, they can go ahead and log in and perhaps get their form started there, or they can do their forms at home.
I've been at a couple of open houses already, and it's, everything is going wonderfully. I mean, just like clockwork, everybody is flowing through everything they have to do, so kudos again.
Well, thank you very much. Again, as any enterprise project that goes along, we're going to have some hiccups, and we will address those, we'll take those lessons learned, and we'll move forward.
Other questions?
Comments? Well, you know that how much I love you and how much easier you have made my life.
Well, thank you.
I would say that it took me minutes as compared to more than an hour last year. I fully hope to be able to send a picture of an empty dining room table, although I suspect I'm going to get a couple of forms coming in as my kids get back to school. I will tell you that I have received positive feedback, unsolicited positive feedback from parents who didn't know I had any kind of a beef with this whole paper system that we had. They've reached out and they've texted and said, whoever did this, I love them, and this is fantastic and wonderful. So, positive feedback in our role is not frequent. It requires an effort that people don't normally put forth. So, thank you for making my life easier in that regard as well. I will tell you that a lot of these fields are pre-populated, so I don't even have to fill in my children's names or their student IDs. Where I have to sign electronically, I put my name in there once, and then every later form where I had to sign, I type a C, and my whole name comes up, and I choose it. So, everything about this was really easy, except the one user error that I made because I wasn't paying attention, but that question was answered immediately. I don't know how to thank you enough. I really just, I'm very, very happy, and I'm super excited. I want the board to have an understanding of the efficiencies that this creates for us in terms of staff at schools and not having to process this paper and allowing us to put more resources into classrooms because this huge effort for you up front and your department up front allows us to save time and money in schools. So, I just, in a very appropriate way, I love you, and I love Trey.
Well, thank you very much. And just a point of emphasis, it is a paradigm shift, and there's going to be some learning curves, and there's going to be some bumps. So, we will address those, we'll take our lessons learned, and we'll move forward.
And the teachers, some of them in some schools are not going to like you because as a teacher, the first classroom that gets all of their forms back gets a gift card to Publix. You've cut that out.
Where does that line form?
No, I know that, I know that. But that was always the push, where's your envelope?
Very good. So, if there's any other comments or questions?
I think we're good.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Fisher. I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, where do I sign up for my first training session?
So, we can take care of that.
Thank you.
Absolutely take care of that.
Grab your grandkids.
Yeah, it's not even needed. If I could do it, it's so intuitive. Honest to God and true, it's intuitive.
That's what I did.
It just, it walks you through, step by step, it's super easy.
So, if you go to leeschools.net and you click on the four families, the family portal, and you click on the little Focus owl on the bottom-left side, that will take you to a webpage that will have all the training videos on there. And it talks everything from registering for the account through navigating the portal, through actually creating, excuse me, completing the forms. So, if you go there, you'll find that. And then if you go, conversely, if you go to focusproject.leschools.net, you'll see where we're at and our updates on kind of the backend.
Awesome, thank you so much.
That is a question that I do have. So, if parents reach out to me with questions, do I send them to the school?
So, ideally, the questions will go to the schools. We know that they're overwhelmed right now. If the school can't do, if the school can't satisfy their request or their problem, then what we would ask of them is to have the tech specialist or someone at that school, it could be the receptionist or whomever, just put in a help ticket, and that'll go to the Focus queue, and we'll respond from there.
Great. Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, public comment is next. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board?
I've not received any cards, but if there are any members of the public that want to speak on any item on this agenda, you are welcome to do so now for three minutes, but your comments must be limited to items on this agenda. I don't see any, Madam Chair.
See any members of the public either. Okay, moving on to board member comments, I'll start with Ms. Ma.
None.
You got nothing. Ms. Fisher?
I have no comments, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
I just want to give a shout-out to Assistant Principal, excuse me, Michelle Mel at River Hall. Their principal, and hopefully she's watching as well, Ms., whom, I just lost her name.
Barfield.
Ms. Barfield. Ms. Barfield is ill, and she's in the hospital. And I went out and visited at their open house last night, a well-oil machine. Everything is pristine and clean and organized, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out for all the good stuff they're doing. I'm sure that as Ms. Barfield is watching, wishing she was there, but she knows that they're in very, very good hands. And then the last shout-out is a Happy Jar. I've been going around to schools, and this morning at G Weaver, they gave me this Happy Jar. So, I would like to make it a point before our meetings to have it out, and everyone, if you're not happy coming through the door, just pick up a little form, and you can be happy before we start. Thank you so much, I think that's it.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
I'm going to make mine Tuesday night. Okay, well, I'm not going to make mine Tuesday night, I'm going to make mine now. I'm really sorry, but I've been putting some of this stuff off for weeks. I would like to mention, one of the things that the board attorney has done in the past is to train our advisory committees on Sunshine, and that will be coming up relatively soon. So, I don't know if you can get with staff to determine when those first meetings will be. And I think we, as a board, would expect you to, you or your firm, to be able to do that in the future.
Happy to do that. If we could get everybody who needs training together at one sitting, that would be ideal.
That would be really difficult because our advisory committees meet on different nights, so that...
Perhaps we could schedule a single general training session.
Mary's hat's going to pop off.
Okay. I, as historically, we've tried to have one singular meeting, and what we find is most of the new members do not come, and those are the ones who are basically needing that training. What we found out is it worked quite well if we had an attorney go to each one of the meetings, and they had captive audience and went over the documents that needed to be done.
The figure that I mentioned earlier, it didn't include an unlimited number of...
What about Vinnie?
Now, that could work. It makes it harder to ask questions, but that could certainly work.
All right, well, why don't?
But we'll, no, it's a very important function. We certainly do not want any members of advisory committees unwittingly violating Sunshine or any of the things, so we'll do it. And, you know, the preparation of the materials for the meeting, that doesn't take a long time. It's just the, you know, the meeting itself.
Political presence.
I think that Mr. E was going to, we spoke about this yesterday, and I think he was going to speak to Mr. Williams as well. Making sure that, because I know last year, we... Making sure that, because I know last year we, um, Mr. Dotick was not able to make it to some of them, and we wanted to make sure that everybody was informed this year.
There's an option. I like that. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Morgan, did you...
Just piggybacking on, on what Ms. Gittens said, I think long-term, what we really need is just a, a webinar, and then, you know, there has to be, you know, you have to sign off somehow that you attended the webinar, and that's...
Put it on the application.
Mandatory webinar.
It's a part of the application to do it. And then they can still discuss it. If they did the webinar there, they can discuss it and send questions or whatever.
Sure. Dr. Atkins?
I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Williams. He and I had a brief conversation. I think that, you know, he, there's a willingness there to do it as long as it's a, um, understanding that it's a transitional duty, because this is a, this is a, they are board advisory committees, they're not staff advisory committees, so...
No workers comp there, right?
Is he all right?
Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
I just wanted to piggy, piggyback on something else that Ms. Gittens said. Um, I took, talked to two people who had recently visited River Hall, one for a, an interview and one for some other reason, and they were very positive in their comments about the welcome and the treatment that they received. They said as soon as they walked in, they felt like they were home, so...
You do.
Good.
It's home.
Okay.
It's a good job, Alice.
Pine Wood Elementary School, I was invited Monday for their, um, uh, Welcome Back to Teachers. Uh, Pine Woods increased seventy-five points last year, which was phenomenal, and what they did was they put out a red carpet, and the administration dressed in gowns, and I was a paparazzi, and my children were the autograph seekers. And they invite, they welcomed the teachers back in a very grand fashion. And, um, she invited me to stay through the whole beginning morning part, where you go through all of the wonderful rules from the district that are being implemented this year. And, um, and, you know, some of them were district rules and some of them were her own. Regardless, at the end, two children, a fourth grader and I think a first grader, got up and gave a speech, and they said, um, first grade teachers, do you believe in me? Fourth grade teachers, do you believe in me? And they went through the whole thing. I have the video. I don't know if it went through to you, because it's a long video and I'm not sure it could send from my phone, but I'll try to share it, because it was, it was just, it was a perfect way to really start the school year. So they were awesome, and then I went to South Fort Myers High School for their training on, they're doing this team social emotional learning thing. I know Ms. Barr.
I went to that.
I know Ms. Fisher went the day before I was there, and, um, it's really a lot of what they've already been doing itself, but they're sort of, um, institutionalizing it or putting process to what they've been doing, and, um, no kid is going to fall through any crack, because it's, it's every student at every level of learning. And the thing I'm always struck by when I'm at South is the culture at that school. Those people love their kids, and those people love South, and those people love the Wolfpack. And I'm just, I'm so grateful when I get, um, invitations like that, because I walk away like, oh, my gosh, I cannot believe how much teachers have to do. You know, I just, it, the, the profession has changed so much, and the number of things they have on their plate, and, and they don't, they don't complain. They, they learn and they train and they become better every day. So I was grateful for that, um, invitation. Um, the National Federation of High School Athletic Association's conference that I attended, I know that I sent the board, um, some notes that I, um, put together on the, um, trainings that I attended, but I want to share a story with you about Eugene Lamb. He is one of my fellow board members on the Florida High School Athletic Association. Um, he and I sat in the NCAA Hall of Fame, and we talked until after it closed. Like, I didn't even know it was closed until I looked up and there was nobody else there, and the lady at front was like, leave, people leave. Um, anyways, Eugene is a former county commissioner in one of the Panhandle counties, I'm not sure which one, um, but when he was in ninth grade, he was truant. Um, he was not attending school. He was working the collared greens fields with his parents. Um, his dad and his mom had, uh, education, um, in the elementary school range, and they were not supporting him in getting an education, not because they didn't think it was important, but because they didn't know how. And the truancy officer came by, saw him working the fields, and said, you got to get your butt back in school next year. North is going to have a basketball team, and I know you can play. So he went back to school because of a basketball team at a new high school that they were building in his county. Um, he went on to become a star. They played for a state championship, um, and he went, he went to college because he was recruited for basketball. Um, the, the reason, so that's one part of the story. He had children. His children went on to succeed in, um, secondary and then post-secondary education, and his son, um, became the first African-American member of the Business Hall of Fame in Tampa, and is a tremendously successful banker now in, I, I think, the Cincinnati, Ohio area. Anyways, my point in this is, um, the importance of athletics, um, because some kids go to school just to be eligible for their sports teams. And I will not allow my children to watch this video, but I was one of those kids. In high school, I did just enough to stay eligible to play. Um, because my freshman year, I learned the lesson that if you don't do that, you don't get to play. Um, so it just, I, I just, you know, athletics is some, sometimes poo-pooed as, you know, not being that important, but, but when you look at the academic impact it can have on a child, I just, I really want us to just, um, continue to think about that. Um, the next item is I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair, for engaging the board attorney in the Fort Myers High School cheerleading investigation slash complaint against the superintendent. Um, I think that was a very important step that was taken. Um, now that every item has been addressed, I'm wondering if, and many of those items have been addressed more than once, um, I'm wondering whether we, as a board, can reach consensus to move on, so that, uh, staff does not deplete any more time or resources on that issue. Can it, can we reach consensus on that?
Is it still a legal issue? Or it's a...
Well, our opinion to you was that the superintendent complied with the school board policy by investigating, um, the, uh, the complaint, in this case referring it to an outside investigator. Following the, um, following the outside investigator's report, the complainant lodged additional complaints that the report wasn't, uh, accurate, um, I will tell you that in most cases where there's an administrative procedure or a trial, one party continues to be disappointed with the result and continues to challenge it. Uh, I suppose there are other, uh, legal remedies. I don't really know, actually, and I never recommend other legal remedies to people. If the board wishes to pursue this further and request further investigation of the additional, um, comments from the complainant, it can do so if it wishes to, uh, conclude and, and move on. As, uh, the, the vice chair suggested, it can do that as well.
So I, I'd like to see consensus on, um, directing the superintendent to move on and not deplete any more staff resources on this specific issue?
Staff or budget.
Staff or budget, yes.
I agree with that.
And that would basically just place it into their hands to follow through, do whatever...
They have other thing, other, they believe there are other remedies, they could pursue that, but at this point, you, you would be saying that you're not taking any further action with respect to that matter. Uh, I, I, I did receive an email, I assume that, uh, you received it as well from the complainant, indicating that, uh, she intended to continue to, uh, try to engage the school board.
So can we have thumbs up? Did you have a comment?
I do.
Ms. Fisher, sorry.
Yes, so, um, of course, I would like to move on, because I think we have already spent a, a lot of time and money on this situation. However, I think that we should ask the superintendent to be sure that we have, um, district-wide consistent processes for athletics, for clubs, organizations, so that in the future, there will be less opportunity for something like this to happen. I mean, my opinion is it shouldn't have happened in the first place, and I think that we need to provide ourselves with, uh, a forum where we are fair and equitable in everything, but that we all know what the rules are, so that there isn't a mistake.
I, I agree with Ms. Fisher in that every time we go through something like this, we should have a takeaway as to what we can do differently. So, you know, maybe deciding what is that takeaway? What, what is it we can do in the future to, um, maybe not alleviate, but, you know, assist with situations like this.
Dr. Atkins?
Well, I would be happy to do so. I, I would agree, and every situation you do, uh, learn from, from going through something like this, and, and I believe that as we entered into this situation, started looking at it, ideas in terms of how we can do a better job as a district to avoid these types of circumstances in the future, um, started to percolate up, and, uh, I would be happy to bring back a recommendation to this board, um, for, uh, future implementation.
We're not talking policy.
No, no, no.
Okay, so can we have some consensus on moving on, not expending more, any more resources or, um, uh, time, and with the understanding the superintendent will come back with a recommendation to avoid this, if at all possible in the future? Thumbs up, thumbs down, can live with it?
That, that's my caveat, that we get the other information.
Well, that's part of what I've, what I've asked for consensus on. Um, okay, good, and then I've got three more items. Our presence on social media for back to school has been outstanding. You are everywhere, all the time, super engaging, um, whether it's in the newspaper, it's on Facebook, it's on wherever it is I am, I'm seeing it. Um, and, um, it's compelling, because it's emotional and it makes you feel good. Um, and the other thing is, uh, Mr. LaRosa's, um, calling up the, I think I sent you an email about this, or I sent Dr. Atkins an email about this. He called press conferences for our football teams.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the kids were so cute. They were so scared, nervous to be on camera, and so excited to start the season, and it was just an, a wonderful opportunity to teach them public speaking and also get Lee County excited for football, um, which I will discuss in a minute. Um, so that's one thing.
We knew that.
I, um, I'm wondering where we stand in terms of an executive session to discuss the sensitive safety and security issues. I'm a little concerned that we haven't done that, um, as we're, the school year is upon us. Is that still something that's in the, the queue that we're going to be working on? Okay, my last comment is about, um, my deep, 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 deep disappointment in the South Florida, self, South Gulf Florida Officials Association. Um, I have a saying in my house that, uh, my kids shouldn't have to deal with adult issues, and I feel like what's happening with the SGFOA is that they have taken an adult problem and laid it at the feet of the students, the student athletes of Lee County, and I am deeply, deeply disappointed by that. Um, I, I don't know how, as a member of the Florida High School Athletic Association, I didn't know that this was an issue, and I, I don't blame FHSAA staff. We, we meet five times a year. No one has ever come to the podium at a meeting or sent me an email or called me or tried to contact me in any way to let me know that this was an issue pending going into this school year. Um, I know that the FHSAA is working on a long-term fix, um, that will impact people statewide.
Can you remind us where that is?
We have, uh, officials, our Officials Association here is saying that they're going to boycott football games, and our season begins Friday. So I'm not clear on why they chose this time to do it.
Most impactful.
Everyone knows that officials pay in Florida needs to be raised. Um, some of what you're seeing out there is not an apt comparison. So we pay a maximum of sixty-five dollars. They're saying other states pay a hundred and ten dollars. Well, that hundred and ten dollars includes travel. Our sixty-five doesn't include travel. So we need to give the FHSAA time to gather the data and make apples-to-apples comparisons, and holding our children hostage is not, in my opinion, the way to go about doing it. Um, no one disputes officials are underpaid, teachers are underpaid, paras are underpaid, coaches, athletic trainers, superintendents, chiefs, principals. Um, look at the market rate for any category of any public employee, uh, public school employee in the state of Florida, and we are underpaid. Um, my real issue with the SGFOA is their approach to this issue, how they've gone about trying to solve this issue. Um, effectuating change should never have a negative impact on children. This will have a negative impact on our children. Um, what I'd like to do is invite the SGFOA to join us in Tallahassee and to advocate for, um, appropriate funding for public education in the state of Florida. Join us in finding a solution that supports children, supports students, and doesn't hurt them. Um, those are my comments. I think, Dr. Atkins, you're next.
I don't, don't have any comments other than say that I, I do know I have a meeting with the staff after this to, to see what we can do to, to hopefully have officials, uh, on the field, but I, I don't know where we are at this point.
Um, Dr. Dr. Attorney Bierman? Technically, you are a doctor.
That's true. A doctor of law, there's a lot of good that does you when you have a toothache, but anyway, um, just happy to, once again, happy to be here and thank you for today. I think it was, uh, very, uh, very good to get your feedback, and, um, we'll be proceeding accordingly.
Fantastic. Any other comments? Great, we're adjourned.
Mary.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Fisher.
I just wanted to do a shout out to the folks, um, Saretta and Terry and the other folks at Student Enrollment. They have been doing a fantastic job, and for some of those families that have been hanging out, they're getting their last minute, um, good news, and so I just want to thank them for all the efforts that they have put forth, because I know they've put like four hundred families through there a day, so it's been a lot of work.
Great, okay, I think we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.